Time to start our work session. Everybody find a seat. I will mention the reason that Mr. Rumley is not here. I think everybody knows he does have COVID and has had for several days. He was on the downhill swing and took another test this morning and tested positive again. So, he and Diane both had them, so keep them in your thoughts and prayers. This is two months in a row that he has not been able to be here. Last month, of course, we were with a lightning hitting his house and not able to... He was there trying to get everything back in order, which they finally have. But, keep them in your thoughts. We'll begin our meeting, and first thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is everybody all right with that? Any additions or anything? I know we've had it to look at. If there are none, all right, that'll be on the consent agenda. Approval of previous meeting's minutes. So, everybody's had time to look at that if you wanted to.
I'm good with it.
Everybody good with it? All right, thank you. Put that on the consent agenda. Board appointments and/or proclamation, if any, and number three... Number four. And we have an appointment to the water and summer authority in District 2, which is Mr. Hartline's district, on Sand Mountain. And you have the one named Philip.
Yeah, Tim Fowler.
He's talked to Mr. Fowler, and obviously, he is willing to serve on that water board. Is this David's son?
We knew it, Tim Fowler, didn't we?
I just knew it's not... It's neither here nor there. I just wondered. I knew it, Tim, some years back. That would be serving a four-year term beginning this month and expires 12/31 of '26. Everybody good with that? You got any questions?
Our age? Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think you would be excellent.
We did skip number three.
All right. Everybody's good with it? That'll go on the consent agenda, Mr. Clerk. And then, number five, approval of splosh capital equipment, if any. And we got someone here with the...
Number three.
We skipped number three.
Oh, did I skip one? Stay there.
You're all right.
I need to be thrown out of here tonight and come back tomorrow. Oh, it's the personnel status report. Like, it stays about the same from a month to one. There are some changes in it, but it usually stays about so there are rehires if somebody's left. Is everybody good with that or any questions? All right. No questions? That'll go on the consent agenda. Someone here with our Parks and Recreation and so on and so forth, Mr... You'll have to tell them who you are. That guy.
Senior Stevens. Hi, I'm Stacy Stevens. I'm Partner Recreation Director for Dade County. The package you guys have in front of you is to replace one of our mowers, our John Deere reel mower with a John Deere rotary mower. The reel mower won't cut all the grasses, and it's hard for us to sharpen the reels, so we're going to replace it with a rotary mower so that we don't have as much maintenance on it.
You have four bid here.
Well, at the top on the pre-owned ones...
Yeah.
The first one, the lowest bid, it has between fourteen, sixteen hundred hours in the company that we're wanting to go with, which is Greenville Turf. They get these mowers in off of a lease program. They go back and check everything with maintenance and make sure that they're in good shape before they sell them. And there are some prices for new ones down here, too, which I see you... They're quite a bit more.
They like them.
They do. And that is where the government did count.
Is there any warranty at all?
We get a 50-hour warranty with it.
Perfect, yeah.
And your Greenville's one year long ago, Miss Stacy. The Greenville's one year long ago. What about the others? What kind of hours they got on them?
Yeah, it says between fourteen, sixteen hundred hours. They have several... Apparently, they do the lease program for a lot of golf courses, and they take them back from the golf courses and sell them new ones for sale.
But you do want to go with the lowest... That's what you're looking at, the lowest bid? Because it's twenty, but not twenty. About thirteen thousand under the other.
Yeah, well, and the other ones, there's no warranty with it, and the mechanics have not checked it out. They've just got it on lots for sale. But the salesman at Greenville said that their mechanics would check it out. They would run the mower, make sure all the pumps, everything works good.
That sounds like a good deal, then.
Philip, you got any questions?
No, I don't. We've talked about it a while now. That price for the youth was about what you could get a new one for about a year ago. The biggest benefit is cutting down the time, you know, the timeframe on mower, and it gives them extra time to do other things besides just staying on a mower all the time.
It's a hundred-inch cut, is what this mower is.
What's one you have now?
The reel mower is a hundred itself, but you can't use it. The only thing we can cut with it is our outfield and our soccer fields. With this mower, we can cut any large area with it.
Ms. Lowry, you got any questions?
I talked to Stacy today about it already, so I'm good with it.
Ms. Bradford?
I'm good with it, yeah.
I'm good with it, too. We got the money done?
We got it.
There you go. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. All right, next, we've got a couple of things in B and C, both for the Public Works Department. Me bringing back up.
Thanks, too, for this job. Alex went out and I got all the bids, which I had a little bout of COVID here last week. Couldn't hardly get around and talk. And he went and got all the bids, and we went and looked at them, and he got all the information on the prices and the types and all. And as of right now, I won't say we're dead in the water, but we're close to what we got. We can't get parts for the one we got. They got the old Vanguard motor dome, and I've been going to local junkyards to get parts for them for the past three or four years.
In our state, last week, we were in a little bit of trouble trying to get what we can fixed. What you see in your breakdown list is we got buyers, mirrors, and Western. And we're trying to equip our two F-350s that they have, truck 176, and then the 2017 unit we have, to put bigger salt beds on them and also put a snowplow on the 2017 truck. And then, one of the single-axle trucks, we have a plow for, but we don't have a salt bed for. And then, we had two of the larger tandem axle beds that he's talking about we can't get parts for, and we only had one of those running last time. So, with these and the Humvee that we have would give us five units to be able to attack our roads. And as we know, we take hundreds of calls about the roads and issues. And Tommy can vouch for me. I called him the night of the snow. We had too many calls to handle and had a big problem on Hell's Gap. Frontier Bluff, Mount Olive, all that stuff come in. We were down two pieces of equipment.
And Sligo, they routed all the...
Interstate off Sligo, and we had twenty-something cars.
It was one fault. We had eight wrecks at one hill, and the other, we had five. The thing about these right here, the equipment we got now, they're limited just to one particular truck. These are electric. They fit in any of our trucks. If one truck goes down, we can put it in another truck.
As we upgrade to tandems, like the tandems we currently have are old five models. So, if we down the road and I break one of them, this'll slide right in.
And we found one two-year-old unit, which was a real buy. And we went and looked at it, but to get it plumbed in our truck was over $10,000 just for the plumbing necessary to make it fit our truck.
And the unit was 15,000, but it was all hydraulic, which marries it to that truck. So, it had a $10,000 to $15,000 estimated price to plum the truck, including adding a bigger reservoir, making sure the pump's big enough to run it.
And the thing about these Snow Dog, we talk to them anytime they upgrade or make improvement, incorporate the older styles or anything else that's new, we'll still work with the old. Say, if we want to get a new truck or a different truck instead of buying all new equipment, we could buy a quick attachment going. We can still use the same equipment.
These are the Snow Dog, all of them were stainless steel or poly. Or poly-stainless blend is what they are. What we currently have on the bigger ones is all metal, and we welded and plated on to death. So, everything here has got... And then, the buyer's Snow Dog, all of the first three, the two, three cubic yards, and the four cubic yard comes with a two-year warranty. And then, the larger one for the tandem truck, which is eight and a half yards, comes with a year warranty. So, I couldn't get prices from mirrors or Western for the bigger units, but you got the comparison and the pricing on the two smaller units for the one-ton trucks and the one for the snowplow. That's all we could get for the other two. Then, the next thing was ready available. That's the next thing. All the buyer's Snow Dogs are sitting in Ohio. All of them are... Can be here next week, besides the big one for the tandem. It's about two weeks out. And they will drop ship them to Chattanooga, and Chattanooga will bring them to the shop, and we will install everything on it. It's the shop.
So, what's your recommendation?
Snow Dog buyers, so we can get going quickly. Like you said, we are worried if we get a big event, and we know winter's not over yet.
And with this, you're looking at two spreaders to go on one-ton trucks, one spreader to go on a single-axle dump truck, and then one to go on a tandem.
That's right. And one plow for the 2017 350. We don't have a plow for that truck.
You're outfitting that truck with a plow and a spreader.
That'd give us five total units to attack the roads, including... That's what's not listed on here is the Humvee. We got a small... We got a pretty good-sized salt shaker and a plow on that Humvee. So, it'd give us five trucks, because when we go, it's Barkoff, or Hell's Gap, Brow Road, Sligo. We gotta hit them quick. And other than that, with two and a half trucks, we couldn't do that. We were running... We were in trouble.
They was all running prior, and they all left out, and they didn't make it.
Them two bigger ones were here when me and Billy started in '05. So, we don't know really how old the old ones are.
If we do, you get the one tandem here, then do we still have one tandem that works?
We got one right now that's hit and missed. Hit, run, hit and run fair, but when they get down into single digits...
Both of them froze up the heavy night when it was so cold. We had to bring them back to the shop and warm them, but they all locked up.
And they've been electric. You do all your hydraulic, you guess. You don't have a problem with, you know, low temperatures affecting hydraulic running. Now, you got, what was it, three-quarter horse motor, number tandem, to pull them with, two? You know how long an electric motor lasts? You worked in electric a lot. I just think that'd be the way to go. Actually, the interchange or any truck, we happen to get it up to date when you're a truck, you're a tandem, it's no big deal to put them in.
You doing the math on that, Don?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Is it 65, 818, 113?
Yeah, that's what I had, 65 at least.
65,818.13.
That total for the plow and the...
Yeah, that's for everything.
Be four boxes and four salt boxes of one plow.
Yeah, 66,000.
Yep. These would be ready to... If they come in tomorrow and you need them Saturday, they'd be ready to go.
We order them tomorrow, they'll be here Wednesday, Thursday, next week.
They'd be... What I mean, they're ready to go when they get here, it's not...
No, they'll have to fix them.
We gotta wire them. We gotta run the wiring harness.
It shouldn't take long. We should be able to do one, maybe two.
The tandem for the big tandem truck is a couple weeks out. But there's the little ones that we need to get us the two one-tones and the little single axle that can move quicker and faster and better on our roads can be here next week. That's what we ask them all, what was most readily available.
Not only that, their location, one of the main offices in Nashville, and they stock the majority of the parts for them in Nashville. So, one day out, get the parts, or you can send somebody one day up there and get them back with it.
And they said they ship trucks back and forth, and they will honor, take our Georgia sales tax as well. They work with municipalities, Pigeon Forge, Signal Mountain, and somebody else had brand-new trucks. They're getting outfitted with some of this. We seen the single axle, the truck 42 we're looking at. We seen they had the box there that we looked at, and that's how we determined what it looked like and how it looked, and it was nice-looking. Like, it's a stainless frame with a poly box on it.
Well, we know we just come through a rough one the other night, what, 100 years ago before we had anything like that, but it may have five more of them in the next year. Hope we don't, but I know you guys, and I want to take this time, first of all, say how much we... The county appreciates y'all, I'm sure, for getting out there, because you're the first one to get hollered at, you know? When you gonna salt our roads and scrape our roads, and we gotta have the stuff to do it with. So, any other questions?
No, I'm good with it.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Well, I'm good with it.
That should be B and C. I think we divided it, but we put it... It's attached on both sides.
Yeah, it's...
I had it broke up before I seen how it was in the meeting. I apologize.
I like to get the opportunity to thank Alex for what he done on this while I'm down under the weather. Once he was all with, I'd have seen him right here.
It's come costing. He let me go up there and look at him with him the other day, so I...
Oh, well, if you got to ride around with him, you're paid and full.
What else could you ask for? Is this next thing numbered, letter D, yours, Alex?
Yep. This is an item for our... Which y'all have... I've talked to all y'all about this after our meeting last week, but this is our UPS system that sits in our 911 facility that runs our phone system for all of our Dade government buildings. It's our software for tax commissioners, tax assessors. Our commission also does our payroll and stuff. We had a critical fail last Tuesday where a capacitor or something burned up in the unit that's been here since 2002. Manufacturing date was oh-one on it. The last service that I was able to get with it from the company was in 2016. So, this thing, 450 amp, something was burning. We were real close to evacuating the center in this building. I went ahead and bypassed the UPS, and when we did, it shut everything off for several seconds, and our whole county was dead. Mary was here filling in, Patty was out for COVID, and we was glad we did not lose payroll, because it was payroll day, Tuesday after a holiday. This is something that was in the last round, sploshed, and, you know, we kept... I bring it up, and I know when to stop, so we're dead in the water. I talked to Lawana. We've got about 25 of those little things you see in the hallway that were screaming about all the space back there stacked on top of each other. We've got minutes, if the generator don't crank, to keep us alive.
Are you using them now, or have...
I got 25 of them back there on the servers. We cannot afford to blink. This UPS runs 450 amps inside the 911 center where all our servers are. It feeds all five of these buildings here, public transportation phone system, the phone system for 4H, transfer station, Billy's office, camera systems, everything, and the whole county government. That's why I tell y'all, that's the heart of our county, sitting in that room back there. And y'all, I'm not going... I want a place that can take a licking and keep ticking, and we took a stab in the heart, and it scared me, and I'm still not comfortable. I know that, and we've got some extra precaution measures put in, but if something blinks or flickers and the employees don't see something right there, to call me and Daniel immediately. So, we've got minutes if the generator was to not crank. Now, we do maintenance on it. Billy's guys check it once a month, and we do our stowers, maintenance on it and all, but it has been hit by lightning before during a storm and did not crank. Before, on our other 100 KVA UPS, I could last six to eight hours before we needed power. We start managing our power, and this is what we're looking at to replace it. So, the Liebert is a system that we currently have, which was priced by Joe Powell and Associates, which, when I started in '05, was... It was called Emerson at the time. Joe Powell bought them out. Again, we worked with them until they would maintain it as long as it would. And the price for it is $74,691.66. Now, that includes a brand-new, large system that we need to keep us going, but it also... It's a smaller 20 KV system that can be here next week off 120 votes. We looked at a rental system, but it was over $30,000 for 24 weeks, and that's not worth throwing our splosh money away. Y'all have heard me talk about the redundant system we're wanting to put at the Civic Center, down at the Sports Complex. We want to reallocate this 20 KV down there for our servers when we start moving stuff down there in the building that can take that. So, it will be reused, and it could, you know, get us long life. And if we have the same two systems there, they can service them while they're there. Speaking with our... I also had Tri-State come in and work with us. They've worked with us on the... Stacy's had them here working with some of the flickering we had at the Justice Building, and they've done a lot of work for us and won the bid on all of our storm shelters. I asked them to stop by and help me look at it, and they also got me a price with a company called Toshiba brand, and it was $106,708.47. So, I've been working pretty hard since last Tuesday trying to get quotes, looking at used ones, reconditions, warranties, and it's been tough. And this is the only two that I could get, and I feel we're in a critical need. This is a 20 to 24-week turnaround to get this new one in, and that's with anybody or more.
I think what people have to realize, too, that these are not just for emergency, when the emergency generator goes off.
We run on 24/7.
Yeah, they're conditioners, they're power conditioners, and even...
So, if you... Yeah, we constantly stay on uninterrupted power in there from... If you cut... I cut this room in half, everything below it is on that UPS constantly.
Because even utility power sometimes has...
Yes, because it'll let us know. If you hit a brownout or something, it alarms us, and we stay constant. These servers, luckily, I mean, we done a hard shutdown, a hard shutdown, and that has never happened, that I've been here, that we've shut down radios, phones, servers, and everything. Never. If any time is shut down, it's controlled shutdown at two or three o'clock in the morning that we're doing ourselves. But to lose everything that quick, it really woke us up a little bit. So, it woke our people up in dispatch, because the number-one thing is to make sure if we're on the phone with somebody's life, we need to be able to handle it. But we lost some of that, which hopefully, some of that, you know, that we've asked for for the new system. But we were so worried that the Z-tron system wouldn't come up. It took us forever to get that thing back up, because it's still running on an old XP operating system. So, I talked to a few of y'all about this, and I've been there a little... I wanted to buy it Wednesday, when we talked Wednesday evening, but we doing our due diligence. We got some backup stuff in. Thank the board of registration of the registers for letting us use that stuff, which we're charging them for, and we're using them, so... But it's minutes if we was to lose something, and that's not... I'm not comfortable, you know?
So, are you recommending?
I'm recommending Liebert and Joe Powell for immediate purchase.
Does that include contract services? I mean, you're going to hire some...
We still have to hire Tri-State, and that'd just be cost-plus. We have to have them come in and help us tear the old one out. They're going to have to help us wire the new one in, because it's 125 amp, single-phase, the 20 KV that's listed there, so we can slowly shut everything down midnight, or, you know, after two or three o'clock, and start powering back on to the bigger UPS that can get us by. The 20 KV that we can get next week will last us two or three hours, maybe. We have done some power management stuff in there and cut all unnecessary stuff out that we don't really need, that we can do away with. I've got six... I got eight of the small ones out on the floor to cover the consoles and cat systems. We're comfortable with that, but to get them, to get a PO, to get this thing locked and ordered and getting it built is what, you know, 20, 24 weeks. 20 to 24 weeks is what they're estimating to get the new one in. But with those 25, 1, 1500s, we're... I'm not comfortable. I looked at used ones, those 15 and 20 KVAs, and, you know, 16 was the most newest, and it was a three-phase, and I just didn't feel the money for it was worth to just get a brand-new one with a two-year warranty from Liebert, and then we can have the same brand on both sides to carry us at the main place on our backup. Sorry. Scared myself.
Money's there.
Well, in this case, it wouldn't matter, because we're on life support.
Oh, yeah.
But it is there. It is there. But you're right.
Let me ask you, isn't it... Yeah, we're on life support, so you're right. It's in there.
Right.
Would that... Would A...
It would.
Would A R P?
I mean, we'll look at both. Yeah.
Well, let's look at them.
Sure. But we... Either way, we got it. If we had to make the general fund work, we gotta get this, you know?
The new one is also scalable as we grow, too. With the newer systems, it can be added in 20 KVAs if we need to be. So, we're going down a little bit from what we originally had. So, that was why the price come down. If we went with the 400, but we can grow as we grow. So, that's what I like about the newer system, that it's got time to grow when we grow.
Whichever way we go, we'll probably put... The reason I ask about the contract services, put both together. I mean, that way, we can capitalize the whole...
Yeah. I had them priced different, because it's two different salesmen...
Yeah, it's fine.
In the divisions they're in, so they can capitalize it as one. If it's one, but be here sooner, we'll have to probably purchase it first and then... Because it can be here next week. They're sitting in Liebert's warehouse in, I think, Asheville, the 20 KV. And I'm going to probably get them the next day, so we can get it here. So, we're going to pull a long weekend or want a couple long nights to get it in.
I've talked about it with you a lot, so I'm up with it.
I mean, that's what we do and what we sign up for, and, you know, I'm being honest. If it was my own business, I'd be worried. I mean, I'm worried. It's my county, it's our people, it's our...
I think they're the same thing with the hospitals.
Yeah, you know what I mean.
So, I know exactly how important it is. I'm good with it.
All right. Thank you.
All right. That on the consent agenda. All right, number six. And this is the... This is the A R P A. I think we've already talked about that, Tommy.
Sheriff saw the training simulator. Yes. So, Philip asked last time to get the PERD test done, the source study done. That was done actually today, and Billy said that the guy said that...
He said it should be double. I met with him over at the date. He said if anything, he might have to move it to adjust a little bit, but he said anything, there'd be no problem. He'll see Ms. Bradford and talk her about it. He thought everything would be doable.
But it can be moved to another spot that's around that period.
Okay, for they thought they wanted it, but he said that if it kind of moved, I guess it'd be northwest, running from the building, look to be better ground. There shouldn't be no problem on that way. Actually, it's level with the ground anyway.
So, that's where we are. I did do a stick frame, just in case y'all wanted a stick frame instead of a building. And this is just a shell. We would have to go in, hang a sheet rock, do the... Which, I mean, we can do all that stuff. But the stick frame was 145,000, that's concrete. We would have to... Or Billy would have to do the pad, but they would do the footing, the concrete, build it up, refit, but we would be responsible for the inside work. So, that's kind of a comparison.
What was the other, Tommy?
With the concrete and all, it was... The metal was... Let's see. If they don't give us the discounted price, it would be 47,909, and then plus like 13,000 on concrete. So, and then us finish the inside.
And that is a red iron building, correct? Or is that...
I don't know. That's what I want to check on that, too. So, I got to looking at that today, and I do want to make sure on what type of metal they're using on that, because if it's just a little tubing, then I don't know that that's... Would be sufficient. Saying it's hurricane strength, so I'm... We don't have hurricanes up here, but that's what they're saying. Saying it's hurricane strength, so I'm, but we don't have hurricanes up here, but that's what they're saying.
We don't have them yet, but they worked their way this way.
We'll be grateful for whatever.
What was the size of the building?
Uh, the total is, let's see. Yeah, thirty by sixty, but the, with the lean-to and all, it was like thirty by ninety with a twelve-foot like awning. Like a porch top cover. And then the other building was, he did it at a forty-two by, by a hundred. So there isn't, but there's not no awning part, I guess he's closed. It looks like he may have closed the twelve-foot in. So we don't have a plan, we just kind of hand drew and kind of showed them. So he priced it based off of that.
That price is good still that you had.
The metal building, I'll have to recheck because it had a discount on there of eight thousand, seven hundred and ten, but that's ran out. It's ran out now, but I mean, I'll call them back and find out because I need to find out on the tubing, the type of metal that is.
So how much are you asking for?
We do the, the hundred thousand, just like I said, we can do the inside work to keep it down to where we could, you know, the walls and stuff we could put in ourselves. There's enough of us over there that know how to build, so we could do that much ourself.
Yeah, we talked about this a month ago and we just needed the PERT test done.
Yeah, it kind of caught me off guard on that, it was a little quick.
We want to be, I mean, obviously we want the best for the less, you know, whether it's stick build or.
Yeah, and that's what I thought I would get a stick build frame because I didn't know.
But y'all are asking for just an amount, as you say, not necessarily.
We ain't trying to be greedy. We just, we just need somewhere to go and be able to train.
I'm good with it.
Mr. Lowry? As long as you check on that, what'd you call it, red iron? Make sure it's at that type of building.
Yeah, I do want to check on that.
Yeah.
I can let Ted know and he can communicate with y'all.
Sign out. I'm good as long as that's very fast.
Yeah, yeah.
We can do it contingent on that, can't we, Mr. Attorney? Find out.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, whatever's the longest lasting.
Yeah, so when you say it's a red iron, that's the, the beam, that's like, you have ninety-three or four beams.
The price, it kind of sounds like it might have been like carport tubing.
Well, and I keep looking at the picture that I have, that I got, and that's what I keep looking at that. And it's kind of bothering me a little bit, so.
At the same price, you should get close to a red iron builder.
Yeah. And I can check, I think there's a place in Flintstone that did this one, the storage building. Who, who did that?
Yeah, trailer.
Is that, is that the guy that did the storage building? We got some people we can check.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you. Uh, next, we have a grant for second-generation HVAC. Is that gonna be tabled? We're gonna table that, that is for the library and I don't think Ms. Eubanks made it tonight anyway, so we'll table that next month. Historic courthouse number seven is.
It's enclosed, he couldn't be here, they all have COVID.
Oh.
I don't know.
I mean, he doesn't, but everybody else in his whole family does, so he's been around all of them, so he just said, uh-uh. But the update is in here, if you want to look at it, you can, I don't.
It is progression along. Yeah, we can, let's see. We can look at it and hope we can be able to be here next.
He just, yeah, let me open it in a different format, let's see here. RFP for framing and drywall has been issued for proposed, proposal submission the twenty-seventh of January. Construction schedule is HVAC, rough ends is underway. And upcoming RFPs for issuance include the following scopes of work, portions of millwork and landscaping. So most of the HVAC plumbing and electrical has been completed. And we've already made some of those initial payments, so.
You know, I'd ask companies who are here, and you may or may not know, the, the elevator, there was a problem, did that get?
I think he's done with it. I mean, they, they, they've really worked hard on that for months, it seems like. That was a bigger deal than they had anticipated, but, but yeah. I, I, he didn't put it in here, so I didn't ask, but he didn't bring it up, so I feel like that may be completed. Do you know?
I didn't make it to that last courthouse.
I feel like it is though.
Yeah.
He said, you know, he told.
I mean, it was very much underway and there was a plan of action to.
It's just that space between the elevator and the wall is, obviously they had a fix for it. All right, thank you. Number eight, resolution R five dash, R dash five dash twenty-three, agreement with Public Defender's Office. And we have Mr. Jett Johnson with us tonight.
Thank you all, it's a pleasure to be back here in Dade County, serving the people of Dade County. Before the commission, we have our twenty-twenty-three contract. It's virtually the same as every other year that we've done this for the past eighteen years. One small difference that really doesn't affect Dade County is that Catoosa County is going to be taking over as the fiscal agent for our organization as opposed to Walker County. So that just means that Dade County will cut its check to Catoosa instead of Walker, starting this year. And, but other than that, it's exactly the same agreement that we've had for these past eighteen years. And obviously just need to continue to, to do the work that we do to support the people of Dade County and represent them in the court system.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson, anybody?
Thank you. There is one other thing I'd like to mention, if I may. It's certainly not an actionable tonight, but I just wanted to kind of put a bug in everyone's ear. The property that, that we have been, our, our offices in has had some, some issues here of late. We had a, an issue with the air conditioner unit. It's gotten cold, so obviously we hadn't had to worry about that and the space limitations. And I was talking to Don about, you know, what properties around the county might be suitable if, if you all would consider such a thing. And he had mentioned the Historic Depot was a possibility and I went and looked by there and thought that that would be a pretty good location for an office. So just wanted to put that in y'all's minds for future consideration and I'll be happy to discuss any of that with you all at any point in time.
We've already been discussing that at our meeting. We're trying to find you.
Yeah, we're trying to settle on what we're really going to do with it, so.
Well, that, I think that would be a fantastic location. And like I said, anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to talk to you about it.
Because we've already spent a good bit of money on it before the fire, but it's still in good. So, yeah, we've been.
We've been trying. Excellent, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Number nine, resolution R dash oh-one dash twenty-three, financial authorizations on bank account. I'll let you have that.
Okay. Each January, we typically propose this, I think last year, I may have been, I don't know if I missed it, was here, I can't remember. But this is just a standard thing we like to do is to authorize a new and updated resolution primarily for both local banks. So that, one, we ensure that all the current county commissioners are listed on the signature card. Typically, you know, Robert's here a lot, Ted's here a lot, therefore they end up signing a lot of checks. But occasionally they may be out and so we may call upon the other commissioners to sign checks. And the same thing for, just, and this is also just for y'all to make sure that you're aware, you have the right to go anytime you want to, to the bank and talk to them directly. I mean, if, you know, we have had situations long ago, not in the, near this current administration, that it was necessary for peace of mind. And so it's good for, it's just good for us to do it, so you're aware. And then also good for the bankers to have this in their possession that authorizes them to talk to you.
All right. Put that on the consent agenda. Number eleven, the R dash zero-three dash twenty-three, associated county commissioners of Georgia County Legislative Coordinator Appointment for twenty-twenty-three.
Did you skip number ten, anyway?
Yeah.
Okay, well, number eleven, yeah, so what that is, is ACCG requests us to appoint a commissioner just to be representative of us along with every other county in the state. And Robert has been doing that for the last few years, I mean, you know, so, you know, it's basically for legislative matters, meaning.
And it takes a lot of time on.
It does, it's, it's hard to do if you're working. And so, you know, now that, and he was retired at the time, so he's getting closer to making an announcement, I'm sure, about running again in the future.
A segue? Did I hear a segue?
Anyway, if that happens or doesn't happen, someone else may need to maybe step up in the future. But anyway, that's what it's about. I mean, it's, we really don't even have to vote on it, but I just wanted y'all to be aware of it. And, you know, we, again, this is something we do in the January meeting every year.
And with that, I will say the other, part of this is the seven standing committees that ACCG has, policy committees. One of them's federal government policy. And that's how each year they, they come up with the items that they're going to bring to the, both NACO, which is the National Associated Counties, and also the state legislature. For instance, one of them, they, they will ask you to come up with three. And it may be truck weights, it could be, you know, it's a different thing, they don't want to have a long list. And so you, but what I'm going to say is I go to some of those meetings and, and anybody is welcome to go to them. If you want to be on any of those, you just show up and you tell them you know what's going on. And then when they have the meeting to do it, they do have those couple of times that this person will be the one that votes for the other commissioners and votes for the county rather than whatever number of commissioners may be there from a hundred and fifty-nine counties. So it's, it's kind of an important little thing, but it's not, you know, it's not real-time consuming. Don has opened up a door that I will go ahead now and slam shut when he talked about announcement I was going to make. And I did plan to do this at the first of this year. We're in the middle of a term. I'll just put it simply that tonight begins my last two years on the county commission. I have two more years to serve. I do not intend to run, which it's only a year really from now until somebody will start campaigning to run again for the county executive, for myself and for your office. So, but I do not plan to, and that's what Don was alluding to. So I was going to make that probably, and it's just as well to catch out of the bag, it has been for months. I've told a lot of people and my main supporter in not running is, of course, my wife. And I said she's the one, one person out of sixteen thousand that could get me to run, and that ain't going out, I can tell you right now. So, but.
Now I know who to really talk to.
Yeah.
She's high maintenance, I'm telling you, but thank you, Don. Going back to number ten, I'm sorry, is R dash zero-two dash twenty-three. It's the tax anticipation order, known as TAN note for counties, so Don, I'll let you handle that as well.
Yeah, so each year we pre-authorize this through resolution and we, sometimes we use it, sometimes we don't use it. Typically, if a sufficient amount of taxes has been levied and that, we really can't determine that till we run the mileage rate, you know, calculation. It may or may not be necessary to seek a seasonal, what would be called like a seasonal loan that's due to be paid back by December thirty-first of the year. And this is just authorizing that, doesn't mean we're going to use it, just means it's there in case we need it. And that's just to fund the government on the current year's taxes that's not been collected.
Timing issue.
Timing issue, right.
Yes. And it's something we've done, I know since fourteen years I've been here.
I look back, it's been, I mean, Dan Hall, Larry Moore, everybody's used TANs.
Something that I guess probably ever can, it may be some fortunate enough not to ever have to worry about it. But basically it keeps us from having, if something, there is a lull in taxes or whatever and money's down, we don't go to a bank and negotiate. It's there for, to begin drawing on, has to be back by December thirty-first. It has to be paid back, so it's something you don't carry over for another year or another commission, so. Is everybody understanding, everybody good with it? Are any more questions? None, then we'll put that on the consent agenda. Number twelve, resolution R dash zero-four dash twenty-three, memorandum of understanding for the Family Crisis Center.
Okay, so each year, again, January meeting, we typically receive a request from the Family Crisis Center of Walker, Dade, Catoosa and Chautauqua Counties to approve their MOU. I've just taken their language and put it in our resolution format. And you can see that's to provide twenty-four-hour crisis line, provide emergency shelter for victim of domestic violence. Provide safety planning for residential and non-residential victims of domestic violence. Provide legal advocacy services assisting completion of temporary protective orders, court appointments. Provide the victims of domestic violence appropriate referral basis on need. Provide domestic violence support groups for victim of domestic violence. Provide financial assistance for funding allows, allowance to victims of domestic violence and provide follow-up services and support. Provide community education and confidentiality for all clients served through the Family Crisis Center. So that's, that's what they do. And those are recommend, this group has been recommended through the District Attorney's Office. The funds are collected that's, that's used for this are always collected only through the court system. So it's people that violate the law, a law pertaining to these matters. And when they pay their fines and fees, that amount is, that's where, that's how we fund these. And I think there's like five total groups that we've been doing for many years, so.
Any questions, because most of these are things that we do every, it's January, y'all always know it's January, kind of like you know it's time to have a birthday when you need a car tag, so. Okay, put that on the consent agenda. Number thirteen, resolution R dash zero-six dash twenty-three, Georgia Department of Transportation Local Maintenance Improvement Grant, or LMEG, as you've heard us refer to it many, many times, grant application.
Right. So all this is getting your permission to file the grant application, which the money's already been allocated. I didn't bring that amount with me, but it's two hundred and something, or maybe it's right around three hundred thousand, but anyway. They've been more than generous to Dade County in the last three or four years, so, but anyway. It's money that's appropriated to Dade County by the state through the Department of Transportation. And this is just, allows us to file an application, which is due February first or February twenty-eighth, but I'll work on it next week, so we'll be ahead of the game.
And just so y'all know, as commissioners and anybody else that hears or is here or hears this, there was some scuttlebutt going around in ACCG and the legislature this year. Because as you know, Governor Kemp dropped the state sales tax on fuel months ago, back in, when was it, March maybe? So basically all year, we have not collected money and that's where our road money's come from. Federal, federal taxes are still on it, but the, the local money wasn't. So there was some, a lot of people wondering, would this grant even still be available, the, the LMEG grants? Or to what, they would be available, but to what amount? And of course, they were going to ask the governor and the legislature shore up. And the legislature has not, I guess we'll convene Monday, do you know, Robin? I think it's this Monday, usually second Monday, I think, of the year, so that'll be one thing they're doing. But so you put that on the consent agenda and I'll give you something to work on, Don.
All right.
You won't be bored anymore.
Thank you.
Number fourteen, resolution R zero-seven dash twenty-three, amendment number one, fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget.
So we are looking at our first amendment to the FY twenty-three budget, resolution to reflect actual revenues and expenses collected and spent by the county. And you'll see that we have. And you'll see that we have already, these are for sure amounts received, uh, and under lost insurance premium tax. A federal operations, non-capital direct grant and a TVA in lieu of tax payments came in, an additional hundred fifty thousand. And we already had about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in expenses and mostly related, I think, was it to the storm shelters? I mean, yeah, so those are increases around, around the storm shelter. I mean, that, you'll see that most of that is under EMA, I think, emergency management. There is one to sanitation for contracted services and that's just probably due to the fuel that was so high in the fall, pretty much. I won't say that one hundred percent, but sometimes it's based off of volume and so that was an increase there. But anyway, it's a hundred, got a hundred fifty more, taken out a hundred fifty more, so it's a net zero, delta's a zero, so.
Money in, money out.
Money in, money out. There'll be, there'll be more throughout the year, so we'll do this again in a couple, three months.
We'll try to get more in than out for a change. Anybody got any questions on that?
No.
Number fifteen, resolution, put that on the consent agenda, resolution R zero-eight dash twenty-three, disposal of a surplus county property on gov deals.
Yes, so we do have, I opened the wrong document, hold on. We have for disposal this month, Billy's been cleaning up the house over there. And we put most of these things today on gov deals. They just handle it very well. And gov deals is govdeals.com for anybody that's interested in going. These will go, if approved tonight, will go live, I believe, Monday. So they'll settle on a Monday and you'll be surprised, I'm sure, what we consider junk is, you know. And these are five Hummers that we actually, that were donated to the county. But once they're donated, they are county government owned property. So four do run, one is for parts only and, um, one is a nineteen eighty-seven, actually, let's see. Two are nineteen eighty-seven, two are nineteen eighty-nine and one is a nineteen ninety-five, but that's the parts only. So all of those will be available for gov deals beginning Monday morning.
All right.
With pictures.
Any questions on that? These are the ones that the military gave states and counties years, several years ago.
Gave it to the sheriff's office, but we, of course, inherited them.
Any question?
And insured them. I'll be happy to get them off the insurance, actually.
No questions? Put that on consent agenda. And number sixteen, resolution dash R zero-nine dash twenty-three, memorandum of understanding between the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia by and on behalf of UGA Cooperative Extension and Dade County for the provision of cooperative extension service and personnel in Dade County, Georgia. This is something, we looked at all of our memorandums of understanding, because it's something that the governor did back earlier in the year. And ACCG was, put it this way, if you have people in your county that are tied to the state, that would be with, it could be with a District Attorney's Office, state court, which we don't have, but it leaves you possibly liable for giving raises to those people that were given, that are given by the state. I guess is the best way I can put it. And so we're only doing some wording. We're not cutting any monies or anything like that. We did put, uh, University of Georgia on, had to be on, served on ninety days and that has well gone over. Don, we haven't heard anything from the University of Georgia? You haven't heard anything, Robin?
Well, not the university, but we spoke to our local folks, I mean, Robin has. So we're, we need to sit down together and talk about it. I don't think there needs to be any votes tonight.
No. So, did you have something? You stood up?
I just wanted to mention that I have spoken, Robin, and I've reached out with Ted over the course of the time, that he's had different things going on and we haven't been able to speak. But yes, I'm glad to sit down and talk more about that in detail and see what you guys are looking at, wanting to adjust, as well as UGA has. One that came out after the current one that's in place, which was signed in November of nineteen, they came out with a new one in January of twenty. But the changes were so minor, they didn't even worry about getting a new one signed.
Okay.
So we can kinda put the two together and figure out what was to be done.
And, and again, it's just looking at, basically looking at documents that we have. So anytime that you're available, hopefully Ted will be back or we can sit down, you and myself and Don in the next week maybe, and, and Robin. And if something we need to do, so we'll, be no action on that tonight, so table. All right, that concludes our agenda for our work sessions. Anybody have any questions before we adjourn for a moment? Or a few moments, and then we will convene back for our meeting. Hearing none, then everybody take a few minute break.
And Alex is fine, huh?
We got it.